Test one, two. Testing one, two. Call to order, the city council meeting for Monday, August 5th, 2024. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, Lisa.
Mark Bittner.
Here.
Jan Derby.
Here.
Bill LaClair.
Here.
Doug Brand.
Here.
Tim Petrie.
Here.
Bonnie Shumalounis.
Here.
Scott Steckmesser.
Here.
Adam Bahuski.
Here.
Darla LaClair.
Here.
Excellent. Thank you all. We can skip over number four because we're all here this evening. And on to number five, input from the public. If there's anyone here that wishes to address the council, please step up to the podium on your left and state your name and address for the record. Input from the public. Seeing none. On to council communications, letters and other communications from citizens. Anyone have anything? Quiet week. Yes.
I had a question with a citizen and she was asking about whether or not the metro bus line was ever contacted about going outside of the city to the high school. And I don't know if that's within their routes or that would be necessary to do, but I did want to ask that question.
You know, there has been dialogue on the subject. I don't know that it's been recent though. It was probably a couple of years back. There's essentially a one hour turnaround for the Two Rivers route. And that's the difficulty of making that full circuit and getting back to the transfer point. So that's the, that's the extent that I could speak to it tonight.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes, Darla.
Um, I just wanted, this is a really nice thing that somebody communicated to us at the parade. And a gentleman came up to Bill and I when we were just kind of like waiting for the people in front of us to go. And he really had very good things to say about the city. He had lived in Manitowoc and he moved here. And he just wanted to let us know that we're doing a great job and it's appreciated.
Anyone else? If not, I did have one. It was a letter I got back in July. Keep forgetting to bring it to the meeting, but it's basically, doesn't, it's not signed by anyone, but it's addressed, was addressed to me at home. And basically just comments about the pool and how it won't go. But they also say put it to referendum. So it's just someone's personal comments. I just want to make sure that person knows I got the letter and we'll make sure we have it on the record. Other than that, on to number seven, council reports from boards, commissions and committees. Darla, go ahead.
Okay, with Main Street, we're still going along with the public art. And it's that, that, that season to be concentrating on a lot of different projects. So it's, it's, we're doing the same stuff as we did last year. We're just trying to keep it going. We're trying to come up with some other projects, but you won't see them until next, next year. And then Environmental Advisory Board, we got the second video of our educational video library done. And it deals with mitigating storm, was it mitigating stormwater runoff pollution through green infrastructure. And I know it sounds not that interesting, but it really is. So take a look. It's only about 12 minutes long, but it was with Julian Nordike from Sea Grant UW Green Bay. She did a fantastic, it was a fantastic interview and I think you get a lot out of it. So. And then the next one is still kind of up in the air as to what it's going to be, but we'll let you know.
Anyone else? Yes, Mark.
I have two things real quick. This morning at the meeting on the Asian Committee, we talked about the big celebration at Central Park's 70th anniversary. Greg will fill in more details in his report. And then I just want to announce that the chairman of the Personnel and Finance Committee called our meeting tomorrow night, Tuesday at six o'clock. So if anyone's interested in coming to that, it's available at six here in City Hall.
Anyone else? Nope, nothing else. On to eight, city managers, city managers' report. Greg.
We don't have specific invited guests tonight, so I'll jump right into my report and keep it moving. If you haven't stopped down by the harbor, the views are gorgeous. Now, we know that 12 months out of the year. We, on the staffing front, I know the police department, with the assistance from our city clerk and personnel director, have been conducting interviews for the police patrol vacancies. Fire department, we have three vacancies, either current or upcoming shortly in the police department. Fire department is wrapping up interviews in the selection process for one full-time firefighter paramedic position. And we are continuing, or did, are continuing through today, accepting applications for the city planner, community development director. There will be one or two interviews out of that group. And I'll give you an update at the next meeting. Roosevelt, our major infrastructure project, the summer reconstruction of Roosevelt Avenue, noted here from the engineering department that all water services and sanitary sewer laterals are now connected. So those, that new infrastructure, the mains are in place. The roughly 50 homes along the project are connected. And the temporary water services are being dismantled. The most shallow of the underground infrastructure is the storm sewer and the sewer lateral, storm service lateral connections. And that is expected to be completed here within the next two weeks. So by next week, we expect that Mammoth Construction and/or their paving subcontractor Vinton will be engaged in grading and gravel and getting ready for the resurfacing of the streets out there. So with any luck, we'll see concrete going down in September on that project. Yes, please. Thank you. Again, just in case you didn't pick that up at home. If your polling location on the south side is the Abundant Life Church, there will be access across Roosevelt at Hawthorne, as well as of course off Memorial Drive. So that, thank you for pointing that out. With the August 13 primary election next week, Tuesday, would point out that in-person absentee voting continues through this week, I'm sorry, through, yeah, this week Friday. This week it is 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. today through Friday. Yes, City Hall normally closes at noon on Friday because of summer hours. However, it is required that in-person absentee voting be available until 5:00 p.m. that Friday before the election. So the customer, the first floor at City Hall will be open and we will have staff representatives there to accommodate in-person absentee voting. After that, if you haven't mailed in a ballot or dropped it off, you will need to vote in person if you, if you come in on Monday, the 12th, or obviously on Election Day, Tuesday, the 13th. Again, if you want to see a sample ballot, see what's out there, you can go to myvote.wi.gov. There are, the races noted on the partisan primary ballot. You can pick a ballot for whichever party you desire. And there is the partisan primary ballot for US Senator, Congressional District Six Representative, Representative to the Assembly for District, to the Assembly, excuse me, DA, City Clerk, County Treasurer and Register of Deeds. Parks and Rec reminds us that there's still the opportunity for public input on the draft of a new Parks and Open Space Plan that's been developed by the Parks and Rec staff, working very closely with the Advisory Recreation Board. There's a Survey Monkey survey out there through next Monday, August 12. There's also the ability to attend in person and open house for an overview and public input on the Park and Open Space Plan. That's next Monday, the 12th, 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. in the COSCO room at the Senior Center. This is an important document for the city as far as planning capital improvements and the kind of facilities that accommodate rec programming needs at the various parks. It's also important as we aggressively pursue state and federal funding for improvements to the parks because you better have it in your comprehensive outdoor recreation plan or Park and Open Space Plan, as we tend to call it. So would encourage council members and members of the public, if you haven't logged in, go out, do the survey. Come on by the Community House Senior Center next Monday for the session. That is, if you're not here at Plan Commission. Parks and Rec has had a busy summer. As we know, things kicked off not all that long ago, but back on June 27 with a very well-attended Sunday, Thursday, about 3,000 people in attendance and 2,185 Sundays served. Now, some people ate two or three of those, but that's still a lot of people eating Sundays. And great Two Rivers tradition, and that just kicked things off for Car Show Weekend, Fourth of July, Beach Bash and, and the whole array of summer activities. Out at the high school, working with the school district in tandem with their summer school, summer school swim session one saw 65 participants. That wrapped up in June. Mike, I meant to call and ask you today, has, is there a session two ongoing now? That did. Well-attended as well? Okay. We appreciate the cooperation of the Two Rivers School District in making the pool available during the summer for that activity. And July 13 was Two Rivers Night at the Wisconsin Timber Rattlers Game. $213 raised for Two Rivers Parks and Rec. You see there, Mike and our tourism director, Joe Metzen, having an opportunity to schmooze and promote Two Rivers with folks in attendance and share good information on the community. There are also some Two Rivers young people with the city featured prominently at the stadium. So lots of good things going on, lots of great feedback about downtown concerts, concerts at the beach. Lisa took a call today from, was it a young lady that, that called in? She and her boyfriend had, had a great visit here to the beach and decided, they're from London, I think, decided this is where they're going to do a beach wedding as well. Lots of kudos from local residents on yesterday's concert on the beach and just a lot of great things going on. So go to explore Two Rivers for information on all the activities through the balance of summer on into the fall. Kites Over Lake Michigan did make a little bit of a surprise announcement this week. Their 19th annual event, the 2024 event on Labor Day weekend out at the high school campus, will be the last for Kites Over Lake Michigan as a group. Chow Chong has headed up that event. Has been the driving force behind it for 19 years. We have invited Chow and the committee, he's indicated they can attend, to the August 19 council meeting to recognize Chow's contribution and, and all of the hard work of the committee. I think it's fair to say if there are folks out there that would like to pick that ball up and carry it, that leaves a bit of a hole in our summer and it's, it's been an amazing event that has really been, become a signature event for Two Rivers. So here's hoping something can happen there. So there, there is a future for, for this feast for the eyes that's enjoyed by so many people. You know, it changed when it got moved out to the high school, but it proved Two Rivers can support and entertain large crowds at two venues on the same weekend. Because there's no way it'd fit all the people that are at the beach and at kites out at the high school as it's continued out there. So we look forward to hearing more from, from the organizers of kites. And again, the opportunity to sincerely thank Chow and crew for their work at the next meeting. Would remind you that tomorrow night is National Night Out organized by our various first responders in police, fire, the Cool City Crime Prevention Committee. And among the activities, there'll be a chance to meet various emergency personnel, both human and canine. See a Black Hawk helicopter land, that's scheduled for 6:30 p.m. K-9 demos, get up close with various public safety vehicles and equipment, plus food and games. That's all over at Walsh Field, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Tuesday evening, which maybe means Personnel and Finance could wrap it up really quick so we could all get over there as well. Yep. So thanks to everybody that's involved. I know it's not just our, our full-time police and fire folks, but a lot of volunteers from the community. And we will have other departments represented there as well, electric utility, public works this year, you know, electric utility crews, water crews. So great opportunity to, to get to meet the staff and, and hear about what they do and some of the equipment they use in carrying out their jobs. The 70th anniversary for the Two Rivers Senior Center coming up on Wednesday of this week, 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. over in Central Park West. You do have a resolution on your agenda tonight honoring the senior center on that anniversary. And I'd like to, at that time, invite Heather Islandfeld, our senior center director, up to fill you. And she's not in costume tonight, so you might not recognize her because she comes in, in different versions depending on the special event. So that's the real Heather back there. And after, after you hopefully pass that resolution unanimously, she can share some of the information on what goes on, on Wednesday over in the park. Clipper City Chordsman come up to Two Rivers this Thursday, the 8th. Just as our, as, as we share the talents of our municipal band and, and have the Manitowoc Marine Band visit, look forward to seeing the Clipper City Chordsman, I expect, under the expert direction of Dave Bus, our recently retired finance director. So that will be the latest concert in the park on Thursday night here at the Schmidt Brothers Pavilion, Schmidt Brothers Stage in Central Park West. Roger Street Days coming up this weekend, featuring lots of food and drink, including schmelt, I might add. Entertainment includes on Friday, the Branch River Band, Saturday night in the afternoon, or Saturday in the afternoon, Joe and Glow with guest Mark. I don't think that's Mark Bittner. You're out of town on Saturday, if I recall. But Logan Spicer in the evening and then wrapping things up from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m., Smoke Road. Great opportunity to get out, have a good time and celebrate all the good work done by Roger Street Fishing Village. Next concert on the beach, Bands on the Beach is Model Citizens this coming Sunday, August 11, 2:00 to 5:30 p.m. Again, a great variety of music from the 60s through the 90s. Going to be a little bit cooler probably than yesterday, but another great opportunity. Get on out to Neshota. The, our Two Rivers Utilities, Electric Utility reminds us that there is continued availability of Energy Star rebates. If you buy certain energy efficient appliances, feel free to reach out to the Two Rivers Electric Utility Office. Remember though, you've got to submit your paperwork within 90 days of the product purchase date. Good opportunity to save a few bucks on that appliance purchase. A couple, a couple of things in the other category that were sort of late breaking news and not listed on the agenda. But each year in early August, the Wisconsin Department of Revenue releases their report on changes in equalized values for Wisconsin municipalities. That takes into account sales studies for the prior year. So this would be 2023 sales, plus any net new construction or loss of buildings, either properties that go tax exempt or burned down, get demolished, that sort of thing. The notable stats I would cite for our area, Manitowoc County saw the total equalized valuation, again, this is the taxable value of all taxable properties adjusted to reflect the best estimate of market value, up by 11%. A big factor in that because most of the valuation in the county and in our city is residential. The sales in 2023 reflected a 20, I'm sorry, a 9% appreciation or 9% growth in existing residential values. We know there's been a lot of upward activity in the market the last several years. Manitowoc City saw their equalized valuation grow by 11% also. And their existing residential properties grew in value by 8%. The DOR stats for Two Rivers show our total equalized value as a city up by 14% and that driven primarily by 12% growth in existing residential values. So for this year, I think for the third year in a row, a little atypical. And I know people have different feelings on home values going up. Generally, it's a good thing, but for the third year in a row, Two Rivers out ahead of both the countywide and city of Manitowoc numbers for appreciation of existing properties. I do want to talk with our contract assessors at Accurate. I don't know the, the net cause of this, but they also show in the commercial category, economic change of 26% up. Our commercial properties as a class generally have not changed or maybe even declined a little in recent years. So I don't know if, I assume there were some specific sales that drove a number like that. Again, I don't cite that as the biggest contributor to our 14% increase overall in equalized value because, you know, residential properties make up 668 million of our value as a city and commercial is under a million. But still, that's an interesting number for market-driven or economic change on commercial. Market-driven or economic change in manufacturing amounted to only 3%. And that's, it's usually single digits or even slight negative there. There was $4.5 million in new construction in the residential sector cited. And I expect most of that was at our Sandy Bay subdivision, which we'll talk about on the agenda tonight. But overall, you know, you can remember the years when our equalized value as a city was going down, not a good thing. Equalized value going up generally a positive. Another positive, Joe Metzen, just late last week and then today, distributed stats on room tax revenue through June of this year. There's always a one-month lag there because we just got done collecting July revenue. Actually, I'm sorry, no, July revenue has to be in by the end of, those room tax payments have to be in by the end of August. But we've seen, as you know, fantastic year-over-year growth in room tax revenues in, for the past five years. And through June, room tax revenue at $138,379 is about 11% ahead of last year's pace. I'm sorry, about $11,000 ahead of last year's, no, I misspoke there. It's about $14,000 ahead of last year and that's about 11% higher than at this point last year. June was a very good month. We've heard from a couple of our major hotels that July and August should see a continuation of that trend. So it's the hotels, it's the vacation rentals or short-term rental properties. It's a lot of people out there enjoying Two Rivers. Joe is here tonight. He is armed with a lot of great Two Rivers literature, brochures. If you have any questions for him or want to buttonhole him after the meeting, he's, he's here and good for that.
It says online marketplace. Is that vacation rentals as well, but the ones that book online?
You know, our belief is that the vast majority of that are vacation rentals. Obviously, people book hotels through online platforms, but generally pay still at the property. And we've tried to clarify that by asking some of our hotels to check with their managers to see, okay, out of the actual room tax that we're seeing, is, is any of that for the hotels paid through the online marketplace? We haven't gotten a clear answer there yet. So Joe, unless you have something different. Our, our belief as a staff is the vast majority of that online marketplace money is from vacation rentals. I've said it before, but I'll say it again, not, not for your benefit, you've heard it, but for the audience. A couple of years back, maybe three or four now, when the state of Wisconsin passed a law requiring those online platforms to collect room tax on behalf of the local municipalities and remit it to the municipalities, we get that revenue quarterly. There's no subsidiary detail, which is crazy. Doesn't tell you where it came from, except lodging in Two Rivers. And hopefully they got that part right. But in the sausage-making that is passing laws in the legislature, I'm told the, the bill when it was first introduced had that sort of requirement. And, and you know, with a couple of keystrokes, that kind of information is available. However, that was stripped out of the law and we simply get a big check quarterly from each of the online, each of the online platform. each of the online, each of the online platforms. So more than you asked for in your question, Adam, but it's, it's kind of interesting and it sure would be nice, also for purposes of maybe tracking down some of those short term rentals that maybe are not yet registered with the city or the county. Our legislators could help us on that. And that is my report for this evening.
Anything under C, legislative?
Oh, yes, thank you. I'm, I apologize. I'm doing this all the time now, skipping over the tail end. I'd like Matt Heckenleibl, our Public Works Director and Engineer, to come up and give us the quick details on the new discharge permit recently received that covers the next five years' operation at the wastewater plant.
Our permit actually became effective August one, so last week, Thursday, and is in effect until July thirty-first of twenty twenty-nine. The old permit actually expired about two and a half years ago, and we've been working under a phantom permit for the past two and a half years, trying to guess what this new permit would look like. For the most part, there's no big surprises, a couple minor changes here and there, but our previous discharge limits still remain unchanged. We will be looking at replacing our fecal coliform monitoring program and our summer E. coli monitoring program to just a year round E. coli monitoring, and that is to prove that we have an effective disinfectant process so that we know we're discharging clean water. We will also now be required to do effluent quarterly monitoring for nitrogen, nitrite and nitrates, and bi-monthly or every two months of PFOS and PFO monitoring, and then also come up with a annual report on the PFO and PFOS requirements. This is all in anticipation of future discharge limits. Right now, according to my wastewater superintendent, we've already exceeded the trigger points for PFOS, PFOs, monitoring requirements, so we will have to do something down the road. We just don't know what that will be at this time. So we'll continue to monitor both our sludge and our effluent and see what our limits are. Beginning in January twenty, twenty twenty-seven to December of twenty twenty-seven, we'll have to monitor for chlorides and total arsenic, and this again will determine future discharge limits and permit requirements. We have to update our C MOM program or how we do business document by the end of October. It hasn't been formally updated in a while, so we need to bring that more current, changing names, dates, contact personnel, et cetera, and how, how do we do business over there? And then also complete a comprehensive sludge management plan by the end of the year. We also then need to designate a operator in charge for the sanitary sewer collection system by the end of the year as well. So those are the highlights. So nothing terrible at this point in time. It's a lot of additional monitoring for future permit requirements.
Fair to say nothing in this five year permit period that, that would drive capital, new capital projects to meet discharge requirements, but testing, monitoring for things where we may be laying the groundwork.
For future.
For the future, yeah.
It increased costs of chemicals to continue to meet the new standards or monitoring?
We don't know what is going to all be entailed of capital or testing requirements, but it's things that we've done already in-house, so I don't see a lot of significant changes for the testing requirements and monitoring.
Just for any listeners, the, the testing you do now for fecal coliform or E. coli, that's totally separate from the beach water quality testing programs through the county health department, so.
Correct.
Yeah, so just in case anyone out there thinks that's changing, now this is just to make sure we're disinfecting properly and killing, killing the pathogens before they end up back in the lake. And I assume the, the sciences, if you're successfully killing off the E. coli, you're successfully killing off fecal coliform or other similar pathogens?
Correct.
That's why they focused on the one?
On the one, correct.
Okay, thanks. So Utilities Committee might get a deeper drill on that, but maybe did tonight, I don't know.
They actually got the same update about an hour and a half ago.
Important document, it seems a few years ago, we were very, were very concerned about much tighter phosphorus standards, and although we've seen, we saw those ratchet down into the current contract, that, that wasn't a big issue ultimately.
It wasn't a big issue. Mercury and PFOS, PFOs will be the big targets. The nitrogen, nitrate was a little bit of a surprise, but again, nothing that is overly concerning.
Thank you, man. You might want to stay handy because the, the other intergovernmental thing, and thank you for the.
I figured you would handle that.
Yeah, I largely will. We, we did have a meeting, Cassie Pater, our finance director, and, and Matt and I with County Corp Counsel Peter Conrad and J.J. Gutman, the county controller, last week Tuesday regarding the city's utilization of the county matching American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA dollars for assisting with lead lateral, lead water service lateral replacement. I would say overall, the meeting was positive. We did get confirmation of the ability to use the county money on either public or private side lateral replacement and for the city's match to be counted as match if it was on either. Although based on the decision council made at the work session at the end of July, it does, it effectively looks like both of those buckets of ARPA money will get spent on the public side, but still, it's well that we resolved that. The county replacements, there won't be any ARPA money touching that, that will be with borrowing through the D N R's private side lateral loan program that we talked about at the work session. On Roosevelt, where there are approximately fifty lead service lateral replacements, the county's only hangup, if you will, was the idea that the, the city would be collecting from property owners anything over twenty-five hundred, any cost over twenty-five hundred dollars attributable to a private lateral. The county indicated they would not allow that, they were concerned about how that might be difficult to explain in an audit scenario. So for those fifty, in theory, their position is that we would have vulnerability to paying more than twenty-five hundred dollars. That said, now that the D N R, as you recall, there's a lot of moving parts to this, now that the D N R has said sidewalk replacement is public side, not private, that took some cost out of the private side column, and the average lateral on Roosevelt is going to be what, about eighteen hundred dollars? And so we, we expect there will be few, if any, that exceed twenty-five hundred. Okay, one or two, but I guess I would just chalk that up. That's, that's a cost of doing business to get that county match. So that, that I think fairly addresses resolution of the issues with the two twenty twenty-four lapped contracts, Roosevelt and the scattered sites. Now, there's the matter of old business, which was the twenty, our twenty twenty-two contract, Seventeenth Street or on Lincoln, Lincoln Street, where we used city crews versus contractor services to do the street restoration, not prohibited under ARPA, perfectly permissible under the American Rescue Plan Act regs. The county did not allow it, saying it was not their preference that, that their ARPA money be used for restoration by city crews, by contractor, like on these two contracts we just mentioned, fine and dandy. We did raise that issue again, and Mr. Conrad indicated that he, he acknowledged that it's not a violation of the ARPA guidelines, however, it remains the county executive's position and therefore his position that they will not pay for, call it in kind work done for street restoration by municipal crews. I understand they disallowed certain costs on Manitowoc's project where M P U had incurred some of the costs on their water main extension out into Newton. And I guess I, I can say the, the discussion was, well, you know, we wouldn't be doing our jobs if we didn't advocate for that. Geez, we're still spending as a city a lot more money than just our ARPA spend on private side lead lateral replacements. But again, Mr. Conrad reiterated, that is the county's position and we couldn't match that, that sixty with other spend. Now, I don't think it would do any harm to at least send a letter to Mr. Ziegelbauer because it's entirely within the county's discretion, and I'd certainly encourage our county board rep who also serves on city council to maybe bring it up, but from where I'm sitting right now, I don't give it real long odds that we'll recoup that sixty. And I did make a point to very profusely thank the county for their generosity because overall, this has been a good program, but that's what we heard back on that question. So Bonnie, if you, if you have the opportunity at a finance committee meeting or something, it's still for the same good cause that the county offered to assist, and we'd be more than happy to help them spend that sixty thousand, which otherwise will go back to the county. So that's how that meeting went. We had hoped to, and we did at first have to clear up some confusion from the Sea Hay for News article on our work session that had caused some concern within the county, but I think we're able to address that. So that, that does conclude my report. Thank you, man.
Okay. Uh, answer number nine, consent agenda. Under A, we have minutes of meetings from the Architectural Control Committee from July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, and the Community Development Authority and Business and Industrial Development Committee from July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. The recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. Under applications and petitions, we have a landscape tree removal license renewable. We have one of those. And then we have a temporary Class B, Class B for Heineken Brew on September sixth, twenty twenty-four, located at Woodland Dunes, three thousand Hawthorne Avenue. The recommended action will be a motion to approve the application and authorize issuance of the license. Under C, we have financial reports for June twenty twenty-four. There are four, there's a debt service, general fund, Lester Library and Utilities Report. Recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. And then finally, under D, we have summary of verified bills for the month of June twenty twenty-four for two million seventy-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and five cents. The recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. The recommended action for the consent agenda will be a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Do I have that motion? C, none, this will be an all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Uh, to number ten, city council formal items. Under A, we have resolution honoring the Two Rivers Senior Center on its seventieth anniversary. Greg?
Yes, as was mentioned earlier, the seventieth anniversary of the senior center will be celebrated this Wednesday, and councils members have in their packets, however, I don't know that I have in mine as I was looking here, a copy of the resolution, which I would recommend be read into the record, adopted and read for the record. After that, I'll ask Ms. Islandfeld, our senior center director, to come in and give you some of the more fun details on what's going on on Wednesday. Thank you, Lisa. Probably means I misplaced it somewhere too, I was just looking for it on my phone. So you want to do a motion first and then?
Sure, looking for a motion to read and adopt the resolution. Okay, Bonnie, and the bill. And this will be any discussion? Roll call vote then.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Doug Brand?
Aye.
Tim Hatred?
Aye.
Bonnie Schimmelweis?
Aye.
Scott Steckman?
Aye.
Adam Hoste?
Aye.
Darrell Leclerc?
Aye.
Mark Bittner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Enamus even, very good. Resolution honoring the Two Rivers Senior Center on its seventieth anniversary. Whereas the Two Rivers Senior Center was established in nineteen fifty-four, originating from three distinct groups of Golden Agers, the Washington High School Group, the Koenig Elementary Group and the Community House Group. For the next fourteen years, Mrs. Betty Wilker led the organization, overseeing meetings that included a meal, business discussions and planned games and activities. Participants contributed fifteen cents per person to cover the cost of their meals. And whereas the senior center's activities evolved to include community service, crafts, social events, holiday celebrations, card games, bingo and business meetings, which helped establish the foundation for the Golden Agers Club and the senior center as we know it today. And whereas in nineteen fifty-five, the center began issuing its first newsletter, a one-page report published weekly. By nineteen seventy, Marilyn Quirk was hired as the center's first employee. In nineteen seventy-three, the Meals on Wheels program was introduced, initially serving two clients. That same year, the Family Style Hot Lunch program commenced, serving fifty-five individuals per month. And whereas in nineteen seventy-four, the Two Rivers City Council committed the create, the Committee on Aging, with Marilyn Quirk appointed as chairperson. The fiftieth anniversary of the Community House in nineteen eighty-one was marked by the celebration of a second addition, Room one oh six, that's the library as we know it, or COSCA, library as we know it today, and various improvements to the facility. And whereas currently, the senior center offers a diverse range of activities, including bingo, card games, crafts, exercise classes, trust car transportation, recreational travel, fundraisers, special events and community service opportunities. Additionally, there are opportunities for involvement on Committee on Aging or the Friends of the Two Rivers Senior Center Board. And whereas the senior center publishes a monthly newsletter with a distribution of over fifteen hundred copies, the Home Delivered Meal Program provides one thousand three hundred twenty-two meals each month and supports an average of a hundred thirty-eight congregate diners. Volunteers contribute significantly to the Two Rivers community, dedicating approximately ten thousand nine hundred forty-six hours annually. Now, therefore be it resolved that city council of the city of Two Rivers hereby salutes the Two Rivers Senior Center for the services, fund, fellowship and volunteer opportunities it has provided for the past seventy years, and be it further resolved that city council affirms its commitment to continued support for the senior center in partnership with the Committee on Aging, Friends of the Senior Center and the various community groups that support the activities of this valued Two Rivers institution, enhancing the quality of life for seniors in the Two Rivers community. And adopted this fifth day of August, two thousand twenty-four. Round of applause for the staff and all the volunteers, please. And not just with services, but that opportunity for involvement and engagement that we hear from so many people. Heather, if you would, would you like to come forward and tell us all the great things happening?
Good evening. I'm Heather Islandfeld, I'm the senior center supervisor. On Wednesday night, from three to six P M., we are going to be celebrating our seventieth anniversary in Central Park West. We will be taking a little time to honor Marilyn Quirk, she will be in attendance. We will be giving her a little award for all her many years of dedication to the senior center and afterward. We'll also be having some special speakers, including Mike Mathis, Greg and Representative Tittle will be honoring us with a citation. Our senior center choir has also decided to get together to honor Marilyn because Marilyn started the choir, so they'll be singing for her. H and P concessions will be there, the first two hundred people in attendance will be able to eat for free. We also invited some of our local nonprofit groups to be vendors and sell their own wares and get the word out about their nonprofit organizations at our celebration. And finally, we will also have some door prizes for folks to win that were donated by our Main Street businesses. That's all I have, thank you.
Council members, I know, I think you've all gotten invites, but if it's at all possible to stop over, please, please do. And that's, that's great that Marilyn's going to be there, she served for a lot of years. Thank you very much, Heather.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, let's see, on to B, city managers recommended appointments to boards and committees. On to B, city managers' recommended appointments to boards and committees. Uh, Environmental Advisory Board, John Tillson for a term expiring May first, twenty twenty-six, finishing the GAD term, and Tracy Coach for a term expiring May first, twenty twenty-five, finishing branch term. Business and Industrial Development Committee, uh, Greg Conan to a term expiring May first, twenty twenty-seven. The recommended action will be a motion to approve the appointments as recommended by the city manager. Anything to add, Greg?
Oh, I think that's pretty much it. Again, both of these, um, this is wrapping up terms on the Environmental Advisory Board, one due to a resignation and one, uh, with, um, uh, Doug getting elected to city council and of course, former council member Tracy Coach. Greg Conan, who, uh, is on the CVA currently and has been on the BIDC, uh, in the past, interested in serving another term and he, um, is someone we can always count on toward the quorums there and participates actively in the Loan Review Subcommittee of BIDC. So happy to recommend all three of these.
Okay. Looking for a motion to approve the appointments.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointments.
Doug first, but we'll do you second.
Sorry.
Okay.
Second motion.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, this will be a voice vote, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carry. Thank you. Uh, on to C, new Class B license for Spices of Two Rivers LLC, located at twelve-ten Washington Street. Gustu Gustu at Hakari, sorry if I butchered that name, uh, is the agent for a period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The recommended, uh, action will be to authorize the city clerk to issue the license pending the approval of inspections and background checks.
This is, um, actually for the former Eminem location. I can tell you that, uh, Mr. Atukari's entity, uh, Spices of Two Rivers LLC, has closed on the purchase of this property. I don't know what the specific plans are for that location, but, uh, again, uh, the opening would be or the issuance would be contingent upon the proper inspections as noted, so.
Okay. Uh, looking for a motion then. Thank you, Bill. Second by Bonnie. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, this will be a voice vote again, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carry. Thank you. Uh, on to D, consideration of developer grant, uh, agreements to provide funding from Tax Incremental District Number Eight to assist local businesses with capital investment projects. Uh, under A, we have a ten thousand dollar grant from TID number eight to assist with facade work at twenty fifteen Jackson Street, the former Koenig Body Shop by the Wave TR LLC. The recommended action will be a motion to approve the grant agreement as presented. Greg.
Yes, uh, both of these are, but council members will recall, there's a total of a hundred thousand dollars budgeted in this year's budget for grants for facades or or other assistance to small businesses. Some of the money is in TID number eight, the old high school blight elimination TID. Some of it's in TID number thirteen, the thus far unsuccessful Culvers TID that was, uh, created around five blocks, uh, on the north side of the downtown. And then there's, uh, another twenty thousand dollars in the city's community development budget if there are applications that aren't from an existing TID. Both of these proposed projects lie within a half mile of TID number eight, whose project plan is amended a few years back, does allow for direct grants to businesses within that half mile radius around its limits. Um, these, um, we were contacted about each of these within the past month and wanted to get them to council fairly quickly because, as noted in my memo, the expenditure period for TIFs runs for a period of twenty years from the date of the council resolution adopting the TIF district. And for TID number eight, that was August five, two thousand, I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty-two. So actually, it's two thousand and two, it's twenty-two years, twenty, that's twenty-seven years TIF life, I got that backwards. And, uh, the last five years, you can collect revenue, but your twenty-two years is as long as the expenditure period can be for this. So we're, today's the deadline day and we, uh, for both of these, the Wave TR LLC and Pop Start Restaurant Group, which is the next one, we have pre-signed development agreements from those applicants, which if council approves tonight, uh, the deputy clerk and I will sign. So they are off record by council action and signed, uh, today. So I did check with, um, with bond counsel on that, who referred me to, uh, the Department of Revenue's Q and As, just just to double check. And, uh, funds expended includes either committed under a contract or for a project where financing, like debt financing, has been secured or where there is a, an executed development agreement by, uh, the end of the expenditure period. So, uh, in the case of the Wave TR LLC, Joe Baton, um, is the principal in this LLC. He's got a number of business enterprises in town. This is the old Koenig or Pucci Decker Body Shop going way back, uh, over on Jackson. Uh, he is renovating that to house some of his businesses and maybe also have some rental space. Uh, the work includes tuck pointing, mason repair, uh, revamping or replacing the big canopy that runs along the front of the building, replacing windows and doors. Um, I did make one change. Mr. Baton stopped in today to sign the agreement and he said, you know, there are some windows visible from the street on the north side of the office in front. So what I would propose to sign would be as presented to you, except, uh, it would, in addition to citing the front or west facade and the south facade, it would also reference the north side of the building. Um, and this would be, as with other facade grants, a minimum dollar-for-dollar match. He's identified a project estimated at twenty-eight thousand five fifty, but the required spend in order to get the ten thousand dollar grant would be, uh, twenty thousand dollars. This, even though it's outside the bid district, since it is a facade, would be subject to the Main Street Design Committee signing off on a design. I don't think it's going to be a huge change in the look of the building, but he's of the understanding and it's in the agreement that that design review is required first.
Yeah.
Yep.
So we're looking for a motion to approve that grant agreement as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Adam. Second by Bill. Any discussion?
Greg, if I could, I have two questions. I think I know the answer really is, the payment of the credit, actual TID money will be, uh, paid upon completion.
Right. And that's how all of these are. This one, at the request of the applicant, does provide that there could be two payments, but that is only if we've agreed upfront on two distinct phases with specific work items in each. And it would be still upon completion, call it a phase one, you get the payment for phase one, and and documentation of the spending and you've paid the bills similarly for two.
You know, community awareness, there is a completion date required in order to be?
Yes, and that in this case, it is the end of the year, uh, end of the current year.
Any other discussion? Seeing nothing else, this will be a roll call vote. Lisa.
Douglas Brand.
Aye.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
Scott Steckman.
Aye.
Adam Hoste.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bittner. Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, on to B, um, this one, I know a lot of people have been talking about this building. So this will be a ten thousand dollar grant from Tax Incremental District Number Eight to assist with renovations, equipment, and furnishings for redevelopment of the property at ten thirty-three Twenty-Second Street, known as the former Luigi's Restaurant by Pop Start Restaurant Group LLC. The recommended action will be a motion to approve the grant agreement as presented.
Yes, um, Justin Allness and Nathan Holsey, two young men with, uh, both with, uh, experience in the restaurant business, have a purchase contract in place for the former Luigi's building at, uh, ten thirty-three Twenty-Second Street. Uh, their their goal is to close on that purchase by the end of August. Uh, have met with them in the context of this grant and also in the context of a, of a loan application to the to the BIDC. Uh, I would just mention that for a possible sixty thousand dollar loan. The bulk of their financing, three hundred fifty thousand dollars, is through, um, through a credit arrangement with a private bank and an SBA loan. So this one is looking good. You'll probably see a special BIDC meeting separate from this for consideration of that loan. And this one is not specifically for facade work. They undoubtedly will have a new sign because it's not going to be Pizza Garden. Um, but, um, this would allow for, um, improvements to the property and or machinery and equipment to be reimbursable. So again, matched on at least a dollar-for-dollar basis and with a completion deadline a little bit later in this instance, well, I would note, um, on page, it's not number, I guess, under the developer responsibilities, they need to close on the property and any of the business personal property they're buying along with it, not later than September thirty. That gave them an extra month beyond their current purchase agreement. Um, uh, in addition to the investment, uh, related to that purchase, uh, would require that they invest a minimum of one hundred thousand dollars in the project for building alterations, repairs, or improvements, machinery and equipment, furnishing signings and signage, I'm sorry, and site improvements, all of which would have to be completed by the end of March of next year and open the business not later than the end of March of next year. Again, their their plans are more optimistic than that. They fully expect, uh, they would be open before year end, but we've learned from experience it doesn't hurt to cut a little bit of reasonable slack, uh, in these agreements. But, uh, I enthusiastically recommend approval of this grant to effectively earmark ten thousand dollars, uh, for a grant, and I I think we're going to see some good things finally, uh, happening over on that corner.
Excellent. Uh, so looking for a motion then. Thank you, Adam. Second by Darla. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote. Lisa.
Tim Patrion. Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
Scott Steckman.
Aye.
Adam Hoste.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc. Aye. Mark Bittner. Shannon Derby.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Uh, on to E, consideration of bids for Sandy Bay Highlands Subdivision Phase Three Infrastructure, twenty twenty-four capital budget item, budgeted at one million dollars. Um, under A, we have discussion of options for project scope and financing.
Okay. This is, this got some initial discussion at the council's July work session, uh, continuing tonight. Uh, bids were opened on July twelfth for the next phase of street and utility infrastructure for the Sandy Bay subdivision. We've dubbed it Phase Three. Uh, as we've discussed previously, there's a base bid package that would extend infrastructure sufficient to serve eleven more lots. And there was also an alter, an ad alternate, which would extend that infrastructure further to, um, serve up to twenty, not up to, but twenty-six lots. And, um, you've seen this map before. Basically, the base bid would extend Orchard Lane off of, uh, Lake Breeze Way to the north to pick up a one, two, three lots that would front on Orchard. And then a, an east-west cul-de-sac, Raleigh Court, we've tabbed it, uh, would serve those lots shown on the cul-de-sac. Um, it was also bid with an ad alternate, which would take, uh, Orchard Lane further north and then, uh, pick up with what would be a continuation of, I guess you'd call it, of Sandy Ridge Drive to the west. There's, the total area shown here, uh, outlined in the various colors is the remaining seventeen acres that the city owns in that area. Um, if the base bid and ad alternate are authorized, there still would be a remainder area as depicted in yellow there, which either yields six or seven lots or three regular lots on the east side and the potential for a single-family, uh, development with multiple units or planned unit development on the west. That that remains to be seen. Staff, um, I should mention, there's a million dollars budgeted for this project in the twenty twenty-four capital budget, six hundred fifty thousand in borrowed funds and three hundred fifty thousand as an advance from the stormwater utility, uh, with the intent that lot sales would reimburse, um, the stormwater utility and would, uh, be applied to retiring that debt. Uh, we as a staff are recommending that the council take the more aggressive path here and approve the base bid plus ad alternate. That does bring down the average cost per lot, I'm recalling by about eighty-five hundred dollars. Um, that's more attractive. Um, yet, uh, at the rate we've seen lots sell in the last couple of years, it would avoid having a bunch of dust flying over there again within about two years i- if we continue at the current rate. Um, so we we do recommend that. That would ultimately mean there, again, a million dollars covers the contract that's in front of you tonight, but this contract does, if you approved it with the ad alternate, still doesn't include the electric and gas extensions, the concrete curb and gutter, and that first lift of asphalt, which is how we developed phase one and and phase two. Um, so we've wanted to be clear while recommending that base bid plus alternate, if that's approved, it it really means there's about another seven hundred thousand dollars in spending that would be required and a good portion of that would be borrowing in the twenty twenty-five budget. Um, so that's where we are. I can tell you from discussions with one area builder who's, uh, built four or five spec homes in this area, he's indicated a strong interest in doing further lot acquisitions and, uh, at least expressed a couple of weeks ago that he would be interested in maybe starting to build them two at a time because he's seen good success there. I was contacted by another contractor just last Friday, who has a client in the O'Clair area, who actually came and attended a CVA meeting earlier this year because he's interested in building a home here and wants to know about phase three. So, uh, I got a call from that different builder on, uh, his behalf. We've also had discussions with, uh, an area builder who's building a very nice custom home, uh, over there right now, uh, regarding the next phase. And, uh, he was the one that suggested to Matt that we add to lots, the lots there that front just to the west side of that Orchard Lane extension, that those outlots, which would be for stormwater features, biofilters, uh, might very well be added to each of those three lots because it gives the, would give the homeowner greater flexibility on side yard setbacks and that sort of thing. And he's likewise shown a strong interest. Um, as recommended, we are still recommending that the, I'll call it, extra features related to stormwater management, the things beyond water or sewer mains, storm sewer mains, and laterals in the ground, the things like the biofilters and swales, uh, would be funded, um, outright without a repayment expectation from the stormwater utility. Um, and I would still recommend that any realtor commissions, um, we deal with out of our Economic Development Fund because frankly, even with those subsidies, it brings in the plain vanilla lots here, which would be the rectangular eighty-five foot wide by hundred thirty foot deep, I believe they are, lots. It would leave, it would put them in the fifty to fifty-five thousand dollar price range, which is quite a bit higher than what we've been charging for lots. Uh, again, talking with those two spec home builders, they felt that things were were doable. When I I did get feedback that if you get up to sixty thousand or higher, that's going to be a tough one in the current market. Uh, so that was the feedback. I think pretty strong interest from builders. We're all watching what's going to happen with the national economy. We know there's some storm clouds we heard about today, although that may hasten the decline in interest rates, which is a good thing if you're wanting to buy a home. Um, so that's where we are. I just, I think I've referenced it before. These are all photos taken within the past year, of course, of homes under construction at the subdivision. As of January first, twenty twenty-three, the last official tax date, uh, because we haven't set, our assessor hasn't set final values for twenty twenty-four, there were twenty completed homes at the subdivision. Uh, there were eight in various stages of construction that will be on the tax rolls next year. Those existing homes, uh, that were already on the tax rolls had an average assessed value of two hundred forty-two thousand sixty-five dollars. If you apply a percentage, given that our overall assessment ratio is sixty-three percent, that would indicate an, um, an average or mean market value for those homes at about three hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. And yeah, that probably feels about right, seeing what we're seeing, homes listed for and and some of the spec homes going. So that is more than double, a lot more than. So that is more than double, a a lot more than double of the existing average home value in the city. Uh, I think I'd shared previously that at that assessed value, uh, the city share of the tax bill paid by the average home in the subdivision is about twenty-seven hundred dollars each year. So there is a near-term return to the city, not to mention the school district, the county and LTC from that new construction. So um it is asking the council to take uh somewhat of a leap of faith, but I I would point out in a community that needs new housing of all types, this is an area where we've actually been seeing some pretty solid success. And we only have one lot. We have several lots that are still vacant up there, but only one of them that's unencumbered with a purchase agreement or has or hasn't already sold. So um if we want more supply into the pipeline, we need action on this. Action for the expanded contract, although it's biting off more and would be more borrowing next year, also brings down the average cost per lot and uh offers more choices. So Matt is here to answer any technical questions because I'm about at the extent of my expertise and with that would turn it over to council.
Is there any questions for Matt or for Greg?
Greg, just like you said, twenty-six lots, potentially average of uh twenty-seven hundred, that's over seventy thousand dollars of incremental revenue too for the community.
Yep, there is a return on it. And of course, they they all use utilities and pay those other fees as well. And um again, stormwater improvements are expensive, but the rationale for saying, gee, just have the stormwater pay without the expectation of a payback for the swales and the biofilters. You could argue that one either way, because if there was a new developer coming in, we would say, take care of those things you have to do now for stormwater. On the other hand, these folks are going to be paying the same uh stormwater fee, sixty-nine dollars a year, as the rest of us. And once it's done, if it's done properly, this isn't a neighborhood we're going to be visit revisiting to retrofit.
Biofilters eliminate the need for a stormwater pond, right?
Correct. Um, the, again, phase one and two, phases one and two are served by the existing stormwater pond. We are, and we knew that coming into this, we're at the capacity limit for that pond. Um, originally, it was anticipated there'd be a stormwater pond um in the area just north of lots two and three on the east side of um Orchard Lane. That still is a, and again, Matt can explain this. It's it's a stormwater management area. Yep. But frankly, another full-blown stormwater pond and the facilities to get the water there was about a million dollar investment. And uh by using the bio swales and other features here, uh it's not cheap, but it proved to be less expensive. Uh, there is some infrastructure being built, even if you do the base bid plus add alternate, there are some facilities there that will serve uh the stormwater management needs of the remainder parcel. If I got that one straight? Yeah, so. The intent is that it would, uh, but not with this project. Yep. The one, the one thing I I've heard, and it was from Andrew, our our water utility director, was, you know, it sure would be nice instead of having two dead ends there, uh if if there could be connectivity. And my response was, yeah, that's true. And frankly, if we were to come in under budget, and I'm not going to guarantee that, but that might be the one utility we'd want to look at looping. This whole area is still effectively a dead end, but at least it's it a radial feed. There's a main that goes out there. At least it would loop around this area if that happened. But ultimately, yeah, ultimately, the intent is to close that gap and go through the area that's outlined in yellow. We get questions from lot purchasers in the community about whether there's ever an intent to connect this over to East Point with street infrastructure or over to Lincoln Avenue. And while that, while that was shown on some early plots, that's not the intent. Uh, you'd you'd have some difficulties with wetlands encountered. And frankly, as a staff, our feeling at least is you you might actually reduce the quality of the neighborhood because it would lend itself to through traffic, where now they're public streets, but odds are you're not driving them unless unless you're visiting someone there, you live there, or you're rubbernecking because there's a lot of nice houses getting built. And clearly is to build that because otherwise, uh, actually, otherwise, we'd have dead-end streets that are too long for our code. We need to show an official design intent, and and the intent is very much to complete. But we weren't quite brave enough to bring that as a package to council.
Where does the trail then go? That's going to be?
On the east side of the road.
Okay.
Trail relocated.
So it'll be part of the road then that goes all the way up? Okay.
And again, the reason I've included on this agenda, as with the work session, a resolution of intent to borrow funds isn't meant to tie the council's hands, but I think it is important, you know, that that we all recognize if the recommended action goes forward, there will be more borrowing required. And frankly, if the opportunity would present itself, say with an an easy open winter to get in there and do the underground electric sooner rather than later, um, I don't see the curb and gutter or street surfaces going in. But just to be sure, if we spend any money that would that bleeds over into that next pot of money that's needed, that we're legal and it's covered. Um, some of the things have to happen to sell lots. You've got to have electricity and 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 natural gas. There, I'm not saying it would be deferred, but it's possible, you know, curb and gutter and asphalt. Maybe it's, we think it's twenty twenty-five thing right now. It could become a twenty twenty-six thing. But I I think it's important that that need for additional resources to get this done is recognized, and that's why the resolution of intent to borrow is there.
Any other questions, Adam?
Can you go over your borrowing table? And what exactly is not going to be repaid and where that's going to leave us? I know it's in there, but I just wanted to make on. It's not on screen.
You are looking at, are you looking at page nine of ten, ten of ten, those two tables?
Uh, I'm not sure what page numbered is.
The ones with the yellow highlighting that show fit?
I don't have it that way.
It's page one fourteen in the.
I aren't numbered.
Huh?
Yeah.
I'm looking at, I got a copy in hand, so it's it's not labeled the same.
Okay.
But it'd be this one right there, if you can see that.
Ah, okay. Gotcha.
Part of your memo from August.
Okay, the the one, the the new memo from Friday that talked about fund balance. Okay, yeah. Uh, well, that, this table is really, uh, and this was a question, I didn't speak to that earlier, but this was a question that came up at the work session. Well, and Bonnie voiced it, I know. What's the status of the stormwater utility? Uh, because we we want to be protective of that balance and make sure we don't draw it down too much. What this reflects is, how did we come into this year? Well, at the end of twenty twenty-three, this fund had a cash balance of one point two million. Um, the budgeted net operating income is pretty skinny. That's revenues minus operating expenses um and depreciation. Um, remember, we moved street sweeping over to this utility. And I think it's also bearing about fifty-five thousand out of the cost of a hundred thousand dollar study. Forty-five of that comes into the budget as grant revenue, but there's a fairly major spend for a a study. So anyway, we we showed only a net operating income of fourteen thousand. Add back depreciation, which we always do in, at least in a cash flow, and then deduct or and add back the special assessment payments that we as we anticipate getting into the stormwater utility from various projects. Uh, take away the debt principal payments this year because, again, the operating budget for the utility reflects the interest expense on debt, but it doesn't reflect the principal. So, and and then take away capital projects. Roosevelt, uh, the decision was made to pay for the Roosevelt storm sewer work with cash out of the fund. Take out of there Sandy Bay pay phase three. This is the number that originally was three hundred fifty thousand dollars, but I reduced this to reflect the actual bid cost for the mains and laterals plus contingency. So that is an advance from the stormwater pond that's intended to be repaid from lot sales on this project. But in terms of cash, it still would draw cash down this year. So that would give us a projected fund balance at year end of about five hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. Um, now, next year, we do have uh, that budget's not adopted, but we do have a proposed street project on the books that's a block of Harbor Street, about a a block each of Sixteenth and Emmett Streets on the east side. Uh, the current cost estimate for the stormwater component or storm sewer component of that, including engineering and contingency is two hundred seventy thousand dollars. And then over at Sandy Bay, if we um, if council accepts this proposal, uh, this this fund would be responsible for the biofilters and swales. This assumes both of those projects are paid from cash. I don't think we should do that, but it's sort of a worst case. It's probably time to borrow for projects since we've paid cash out of this fund for two years. But if that happened and you did have, um, excuse me, and you did have um a repayment of the money this fund advanced for the Eggers downtown parcel, I was kind of hoping the Tiff district over here for the Confluence project would pay that, but this fund fronted the money for that whole parcel. Um, if we if we need the cash, it needs to be repaid, and that may be have to be temporarily from the Act Dev Fund. Either that or take that Tiff into the red, which I'm not real fond of. But this anticipates a payment for that. And net operations plus special assessments, we don't have a budget yet, but assuming a normal budget and assuming revenue from special assessments and not having that that fifty-five thousand dollar study, I'm making an assumption there that we'd see a hundred thousand net from operations and a transfer in from lot sales, and this would only be the equivalent of three, three and a half lot sales. That would give you a cash balance at year end, right about where we are now, we're about five hundred sixty-five thousand. Uh, that said, uh, if we use debt borrowing uh for the twenty twenty-five projects, um, you know, you can add back five hundred ten thousand dollars or, no, I'm sorry, four hundred ninety thousand dollars there. Of course, there's debt service, we know that, each year, but that would get, if we borrowed for those projects and these other things happened, it would get that cash balance back up to about a million fifty-five thousand dollars. So, and that would still mean that the dollars advanced for the pipes in the ground, that um two hundred fifty-four thousand two hundred above, there'd still be a hundred four thousand two hundred dollars owed plus interest if you want to apply an interest rate to that interfund uh advance. I don't know if that all made sense or not, but uh I think it shows that there is the ability not to not to break the stormwater fund. But the better, the, probably the better way to go would actually to be to do borrowing for our twenty twenty-five projects. Uh, because we we've hit this fund pretty well with cash outlays for both Roosevelt this year and for the Lincoln Avenue project, excuse me, Lincoln Street project last year.
You're requesting two hundred and twenty thousand forty dollars to be not repaid from stormwater for Sandy Bay?
Correct. And that's the cost of the biofilter swales, stormwater management.
And that's that's the only number not to be repaid.
Correct.
For Sandy Bay. And then if you issued the project debt as debt instead of cash, our fund balance would remain over a million.
That's my projection, yes.
If we don't, it comes down to five hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Yep. And it assumes other things like from some source paying off that advance for the Eggers property purchase. And I threw an interest figure in there. That's at a simple three percent annual interest, and three percent historically is what we've we've paid on interfund loans.
Greg?
Um, it's not a question, but I I will vote yes for it, but I I don't think it's a bad thing to borrow from healthy funds. I just don't ever want to see this become unhealthy, especially because people don't realize that there are some people that this is a big burden for them. For, I mean, like, a regular citizen pays a hundred dollars a year, and that's not, I don't want to make light of that. But it's not the same as paying fourteen thousand a year.
Big institutional properties, industrial properties, yeah, with with a lot of impervious surface, pay some pretty hefty stormwater fees.
And there's a guy in Oshkosh. This was, do you, does this make, did you hear about this? He's going to the council of Oshkosh because he wants the Stormwater Utility Fund to be equalized throughout the city. He's a businessman, and I suppose he has a parking lot. Um, the point is that if he ever would win or get his way, he would probably, I think a lot of people would be going after that. And right now, it's not such a heavy burden, but I don't want to see it get heavier.
Right.
That's all.
Like you say, for for uh, the residential unit is five dollars seventy-five cents um a month or sixty-nine dollars a year, and we've been, I I don't recall, we've had this on the books probably ten years now. We've been fortunate to keep it. But and and, no, your point at the last meeting was quite valid too about not drawing the balance down too much. And I I should have had that answer for you a week ago and and apologize for not having it because we've gotten ourselves into trouble in the past, notably in the water utility for paying for projects in in cash that um were long-term capital projects where we could have borrowed. And it's a lot easier to go and do utility borrowing when you can show you, just like any loan, right? When you can show that fund has cash in the bank versus, no, we spent all of that, now we want to borrow. So uh, I think this shows we, you know, we need to attend to business here, but what we're proposing could be accomplished without unduly drawing down this this fund. And hopefully, our borrowing is at lower rates next year, given what we see happening.
It's important to repeat and repeat the role, and it's a fuels growth too. Growth in population, growth in additional taxes, growth in new citizens. I mean, it's it's exciting additions, beautiful property to be developed.
It's good to see home builders at work and hammers swinging and saws going into rivers. Um, I don't know. And you also see when you look at these numbers why nobody at this point in time is doing privately developed subdivisions with any kind of a profit motive in, not just in TR, but in Manitowoc uh as well, because this is, this is tough.
Any other questions? Otherwise, if not, I'm going to look for recommended action, which is award the base bid and alternate to advanced construction, Inc. of Green Bay, in its low bid amount of nine hundred and forty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars.
I'll make a motion to award base bid and alternate to advanced construction, Green Bay, a little bit amount of nine forty-five.
Yeah, do I have a second?
A second.
All right, so Darla will go first. Council discussion.
This bid does not include the non-repayment from stormwater? I don't see it on there.
This this bid on the the stormwater component of this contract is, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, basically the pipes in the ground.
Got it.
So it would be paying for part of this, yeah.
Yeah, so it's not including that two twenty. If it does, I don't see it. Unless I'm on the wrong page.
I'm sorry, the two.
Swale.
Yeah, for the swales and bio.
What if, well, yeah, it includes part of, it includes part of the pipes in the ground and the biofilters. Did I account for that right? Did I account for that right? So we would be pulling some of that 224 for work that's in this contract.
That out of stormwater quality management?
Yes, that would be, I believe the term was stormwater quality measure. And then some of it would come next year. And that was a surprisingly high number, but that was for planting and finishing off those bio filters.
Before we vote, I will not be in favor of it just because of the non repayment back to stormwater. I want to see this phase happen, but I do not want to see it attack the stormwater. That's, I wish we could find a different way. Because I do like it, and I want to see it go forward, but not at a cost of 220,000 to everyone that's paid into stormwater.
Anything else? Seeing nothing else, this will be a roll call vote. Lisa?
Bonnie Schimmel.
Aye.
Scott Stickmus.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
No.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Yes, aye.
Shannon Durbin.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Tim Major.
Aye.
On to C, resolution of intent for anticipated 2025 borrowing for completion of roadway and utility infrastructure, paving, gas, and electric totaling approximately 500,000. The recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the resolution. Anything else, Greg, on this one?
Again, this is to put, put a marker down. Under Wisconsin law, you can, you can either, you can borrow money for costs you've incurred for capital construction up to 60 days after making the outlay. Otherwise, you, you can, you can reimburse, the city can reimburse itself for proceeds of borrowing that go back further, for expenses that go back further if a resolution of intent has been adopted. So this is intended to put that. And I should mention, you can, that, that limitation doesn't apply to engineering and planning costs, but for those you can recoup. But again, I would recommend council approval on this to put that marker down about potential additional borrowing for this project. I think as we, as I presented it and council approved, the actual GO borrowing that would be involved here would be more likely not to exceed half a million. But again, this isn't binding the council, it's a statement of intent. Any additional contractual matters, awards of contract for infrastructure, obviously you'll have to come back here, as will the actual borrowing actions. So with all of that as background, I'd recommend approval of the resolution as presented.
We're looking for that motion.
Make a motion to waive reading and adopt this resolution.
Thank you, Mark. Second by Bill. Council discussion.
No, I expect this would be our standard, probably 10-year borrowing in the marketplace. Most recent issue we did back in March came in at 3.59%. It's not as good a deal as the Clean Water Fund and Safe Drinking Water Fund rates, which are subsidized with federal money, but those generally aren't available for extension of new infrastructure like in this instance. So it'd be a pretty good deal, but it would be the city's standard borrowing rates.
Don't get any.
Hey, well, I see what you're saying. I, I think if we were retrofitting, maybe I misspoke there, but if we were retrofitting an existing neighborhood to actually reduce our suspended solids and all those things that we want to reduce, it'd be one thing. Here, it's new development, and the law requires that, that it happened. And I don't believe, Matt, correct me, I don't believe we'd have access. Okay, not available from clean water funds is what our engineer indicates. Wish it was, wish it was.
Well, the stormwater ponds, we got credit for those, I'm just saying.
Yeah, you'll get, okay, we, we should get credit in the model. This net addition of paved surfaces and neighborhood won't hurt us in terms of saying, oh geez, now you've got more, more runoff, more suspended solids. It won't hurt us in the modeling that's done, as I understand it, but it would not qualify for some of the special financing that is used generally to correct past sins and bring older areas that don't have stormwater management facilities into compliance. So that, that's the best answer I can, can give.
Okay. Any other discussion? See nothing, this will be a roll call vote. Lisa?
Scott Stickmus.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bittner.
Aye.
Shannon Durbin.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Major.
Bonnie Schimmel.
Aye.
So thank you all for that.
Thanks, council. That's a, that was a big lift, and, but I think it's, it's a good thing. The, that latest home that Mr. Reef is building, I'd mentioned out there at Lake Breeze and Orchard, is on the Parade of Homes in September, and you can bet we will have one big Phase Three sign up for, for anybody that comes to visit that beautiful home on the, on the Parade of Homes. So thank you for the support on that.
Uh, did you want to go back to what you have up on the screen? Our screen at least, or on the?
Oh, yes, I popped that up there inadvertently. Goodness, I, I can do that. This would be for information only. Are we down to that point?
Yes, we are for information only.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just had this here as, at the ready in case I needed it, but now that I hit the button, I would just mention that this, because there's been some feedback in the community. The city clerk has determined that absentee ballots may be dropped off at a drop box located at the counter here at City Hall, which we had last year and the year before, and at the secure drop box located at curbside in front of City Hall. If you've seen the, the Sea Hay for News article, it was announced here at a council meeting, Sea Hay for reported on it, there's been some social media discussion of it. That's the box, and only one is planned. It was put up in December of 2020 in response to COVID to facilitate mostly utility and tax bill drop off. It was available for ballot drop off up until the Wisconsin Supreme Court in July of 2022 said that such box, you could only have a drop off box, a drop box for absentee ballots in the local election clerk's office. Then one appeared on the counter right down here in customer service. Anytime that's available, the building is staffed, so we have staff there. The Wisconsin Supreme Court overturned that decision. We know there were some changes in the Supreme Court, but they basically reversed that earlier decision in July of this year, saying that drop boxes are maybe placed. In follow-up to that court ruling, the Wisconsin Elections Commission on July 11th of this year issued a guidance memo, and it clearly states that the municipal clerk has the discretion to establish drop box locations. There could be any number of them at any number of locations, and it was noted in that guidance that that is within the administrative discretion of the municipal clerk based on the statute. Frankly, it's not a city council decision. Council decides where polling places are in the community. The clerk decides where absent voter ballots can be dropped off. Should be noted that, from what I see in, with a quick Google search, and, and I know Amanda, our clerk, checked with the city of Manitowoc before opting to make our drop box out in front of City Hall available. Manitowoc's clerk has done likewise, and we understand in Sheboygan, they've identified drop boxes in City Hall and at the library. So again, there's no plan to have an array of drop boxes around the community. There, there would be the one inside still and the one immediately in front of the building. This is not taking any stance relative to political positions, or it's basically resuming a practice that was already in place before the July 2022 ruling, when the Supreme Court said, nope, can't have those. And now is done with respect to another Supreme Court decision two years later that allows for drop boxes. So, yeah, I had that in there as a contingent slide, but seeing how it popped up on the screen, thank you. And I do have copies, if council members are interested, of the Wisconsin Elections Commission guidance memo that came out in follow-up to that Supreme Court ruling. So with that, other things for information only, as Mark Bittner mentioned, Personnel and Finance Committee meets tomorrow night at 6:00. Bonnie chairs that committee, Adam and Mark are the other committee members. All council and the public are invited to attend. The agenda includes a look at the general fund budget at mid-year with June month-end reports, a quick report on what we're, we as staff are seeing in the other budgets at mid-year, the June overtime reports, we'll be taking a look at department overtime uses and usage in the different departments at mid-year. We'll talk about a preliminary calendar for 2025 budget review and adoption. It's that time of year again, guys, time to start the budget process. And also, I expect we'll have some preliminary discussion about city manager succession planning and perhaps scheduling a couple of search firms to come in and meet with Personnel Committee or the full council, as my planned retirement is about a year out in early August of next year. So you're all welcome there. And I don't have an exact date, but we probably will have a special BIDC meeting next week as it relates to the redevelopment activity at, I'm sorry, the former Luigi's site on 22nd Street. CVA, if you're on the CVA, will probably, at the regular August meeting on the fourth Tuesday of the month, now focus on Sandy Bay Phase Three and a preliminary look at lot pricing, because while we talked about average prices in that memo, you know, there's some plain vanilla lots and some extra large lots with unique features in that phase. So that group needs to work out a strategy and probably review the covenants as well and see if there are any changes desired in the covenants as they relate to Phase Three. So also, I anticipate at the next CVA meeting, might be the special meeting or the regular, there will be action on, on a lot sale and an announcement coming out about a small business with plans for next year for a building out at the industrial park. So with that teaser, I'll close out my part of the meeting. There's no need for a closed session tonight.
Okay. And the next regular city council meeting is August 19th, and the work session, August 26th. And on to number 12, adjournment, adjournment, looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Bill. Second by Shannon. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be an all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you and good night.